Councilor Lambert.
The President.
Councilor Robert.
Present.
Councilor Ruda.
Present.
Councilor Durfee.
Present.
Councilor Boland.
Here.
Councilor Costa.
Uh-huh.
And Councilor Leonard is absent.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the following. Approval of minutes of the regular council meeting July 27, 2009. Councilor Ruda and Councilor Durfee abstained, absent. Approval of executive session minutes from July 27, 2009. Councilor Ruda and Councilor Durfee abstained, absent. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Arts Council and Waste Water Manager. Correspondence received and filed. Received from Town of Gloucester. Resolution opposing rate hikes by Blue Cross and United Health. Received from Town of Portsmouth. Resolution urging support of U.S. Supreme Court opinion in Kachery versus Salazar land-own by Narragansett Indian Tribe. And the approval of tax accessory abatements.
I'll make the motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
We have motion and second for discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Repose it.
Um, just reflect that I abstained from the voting for the minutes of the last meeting.
It's noted.
And Councilor Ruda.
Sitting as a Board of Licensing Commissioners. Ugo Key and Sons request street excavating license subject to meeting all legal requirements. Approved by DBW Director Steve Berlucci.
I'll make a motion that the, um, license be granted subject to meeting all legal requirements. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Licensing public hearing advertised for Stephen and Colleen LaCombe, Tiverton Coffee House on Stafford Road. Request entertainment license to allow live acoustic folk music advertised subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Yes.
Mr. Souza, you wish to be heard?
Uh, when, when they're done, I'll wait.
Well, it's part of the public hearing. Go right ahead.
All right, well, uh, I live at 49 Hancock. My name is Joe Souza. I've came here tonight to support these people. I, uh, drive past their property every day. They've taken an old house, turned it into a business, something that's turning some taxes to the town, which is good for everybody. Uh, the place is clean. I haven't seen any litter or anything. The grass is cut. They're doing a really good job over there. Uh, they're coming to you for some help, and I hope that this council will see fit to grant that help. I don't expect to see any problems in, uh, I don't see any of the other neighbors, but, uh, the two that I talked to welcome the business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I had one question. Is it Friday or Saturday or both Friday and Saturday?
It would probably, on some weeks, be both.
And it would all we, whether Friday or Saturday, it would be 7 to 10 P.M.?
Yes, sir.
What time do you close?
Uh, well, on Friday and Saturday evenings, it would be at 10.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, I happen to frequent the Tiverton Coffee House, and I can tell you that, uh, these two people here run a great establishment, and I think that, uh, by allowing them to have the acoustic, it, uh, also adds to the atmosphere of their, their coffee shop, and I think it benefits the town of Tiverton. It's the type of thing that, uh, a family can go to and have coffee and some of their great little pastries that they have there and, uh, enjoy some quiet music.
Anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this matter?
Can I ask a question? Why did you include a, uh, fire insurance, uh, policy identification, whatever? Is that one of the legal requirements?
I believe so, yes. We, we got a list of, uh, items we had to submit, and I believe that was on the list.
Fire insurance?
Yes, sir.
Anyone, anyone else from the public wishing to be heard?
Just to respond to Councilor, it's the liability coverage that we require them to have. It just happens to have all of it on one page. They have a million dollars' worth of liability insurance, which is what we needed them to prove. It's in the middle there, and it's, it's kind of lost by the, the whole bunch of Lloyd line ran it.
Anyone else from the public wishing to be heard on the matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing portion of this and open up to the council.
I will make a motion that the entertainment license be granted as requested.
What's that motion?
Motion made and seconded to grant the entertainment license as requested. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Appointments, uh, interviews for a cemetery commission. Jeffrey Magna.
He was unable to make the meeting. That's where I could call.
Anyone wish to start in questioning, uh, Mr. Magna?
Um, Mr. Magna, since, uh, Councilman Leonard is not here, I will say that you're familiar with all the rules and regulations, uh, as put forth regarding the cemetery, uh, commission?
As a licensed funeral director in the state of Rhode Island, Massachusetts, I'm familiar with the regulations for the state, not specific to Cassett Hill, but generally speaking, yes.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Leonard would have also asked the question, why do you want to be appointed?
Well, first of all, I was, I was told it was an opening and someone had approached me. Um, I just felt it would be a better way for me to become involved, more actively involved in the town, um, given my past administrative experience as a school principal and, uh, as licensed funeral director and a bummer. Um, I just felt that I had a significant, um, amount that I could offer to collaborate with the commission. Um, oftentimes, as a funeral director, I, in arranging, um, uh, funeral arrangements with families, I would escort them to cemeteries, uh, such as Notre Dame, St. Patrick's, sometimes for Cassett Hill, um, and I just felt it would be a good opportunity for me.
One of the things on your, um, appointment request is that you feel you'll be able to contribute, share ideas. What did you have in mind?
I'm not specifically familiar with the operation as it operates now, but I, from what I, I understand from a little that I heard, um, I have skills in computer, um, things like Excel, uh, different types of computer programs that I think could, could maybe enhance or, um, maybe help in some way, um, those types of, of skills. Like I said, I'm not familiar specifically with, I know that they sell lots and that they, um, they meet with, with, uh, families at need and, I presume, do pre-needs. Um, also the cremations, I understand that they just opened a cremation section of the cemetery. Um, so I just felt that it, more of the, the details, um, in terms of paperwork or, uh, administrative responsibilities, but also I could add in terms of my experience in working in funeral service.
Is your place of business in Fall River?
I'm currently an educated teacher.
You are?
Uh, I teach at LaSalle Academy in Providence, and, um, I formerly worked for Olivera Funeral Home in Fall River.
But you're presently a teacher?
I'm presently a teacher, yes.
Full-time?
Full-time. And I cover, um, I help out with the funeral, at the funeral home, like summers, school vacations, so I keep it that way as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The interviews for the Newport County Convention and Tourism Board. David Stewart.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Whilst Dan did for Mr. Leonard again and ask, uh, why, why do you want the, requesting the appointment?
Um, can you hear, is that all right there? Um, I've lived in, uh, I've lived, been a Rhode Island resident all my life. Uh, I've lived in Newport for 30 years. I've lived in Tiverton for 22, so I've been a Newport County resident for, I guess, about, you know, 40, 40-something years. Very involved with Newport, uh, love Newport. We leave our boat down there. We, um, spend a lot of time. Uh, in 1984, my wife and I opened up a kayak store here on the waterfront. We specialize in tours, uh, in instructions. We did most of the tours, uh, all around Newport County, whether it be in Jamestown, uh, Fort Adams, uh, Fogland, that type of thing. Uh, got very involved with the tourism, uh, people down there promoting, helping promote, uh, you know, business through there, Bed and Breakfast, that type of thing. Um, I'm also on the Board of Directors of the, uh, Rhode Island Blue Ways Alliance, which is a, um, organization similar to Save the Bay. It's, uh, really more involved with coastal waters and rivers and the stewardship and, again, fostering tourism and making, uh, people aware of the, of the rivers and, um, that type of thing. Um, as an owner of a small business for 15 years, I realize the, uh, the benefit of networking with, with people and trying to, um, support each other. While I owned the store, I was co-founder of a group called the Coastal Villages Co-op, which, uh, we ended up getting approximately 56 stores between independent businesses, between Tiverton, Little Compton, Westport, Payden Aarum. We created a map, um, that showed all the locations of the stores, uh, where they, you know, where they were. Obviously, uh, on the back was a little history or a little description of the stores, so that we all kind of worked together to, um, uh, promote independent business. Um, and I just, um, feel that my background, uh, in that is, uh, um, you know, could be beneficial. I'm also on the Harbor Commission and, uh, I'm the vice chairman there. Been there about six years. And with things like the new marina that's proposed down here on the waterfront, uh, we're hoping to bring more tourism to Tiverton, um, obviously at the same time promote more of the large boats coming into Bristol, uh, excuse me, into, um, into Newport. My other business now, I'm a real estate broker, uh, in town, but I also have a marine marketing company, so I'm involved with the, the marine scene and trying to, you know, create, uh, more marine activity, whether it be on the waterfront in, uh, Newport, Bristol, uh, excuse me, Newport, Tiverton or Portsmouth. So, uh, really, that's about it. I'm just involved with promoting, uh, the local business.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
That's it? Thank you.
Make it easy. What do you mean it's?
Thank you, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council.
Yeah, I, I will sit in for Mr. Leonard and, and ask, why do you want to be on the Newport?
Thank you. Uh, I actually served on the Newport County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board from 1990 to 1998, uh, representing Tiverton as their state senator. Um, uh, so I'm familiar somewhat with the active involvement in the board. Uh, it does work on collecting room tax and, uh, using that room tax to, uh, to market Newport County. Uh, I found when I was on the board in the 90s, uh, they seemed to have forgotten that Tiverton is part of Newport County. Uh, and now, which, which really adds, uh, some, some frosting on the cake, is, uh, now we have a meals tax, uh, that the town, uh, is, uh, beneficial to, uh, to collect, and it helps offset our property taxes, and, uh, we really need to make sure that, uh, we have a voice on the Newport County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board to make sure they know that we have restaurants down here in Newport, uh, in Tiverton, uh, Boathouse, Stone Bridge, I can go on and on, Moulin Rouge. We need to make sure that we're promoting that so that we can bring some of those tourist dollars down into Tiverton, uh, to, uh, you know, take advantage of that meals tax. We don't have many, uh, many room nights here in Tiverton, uh, but, uh, to take advantage of, uh, of that end of it, but, uh, they're actually talking about, uh, merging the Bristol County and Newport County Tourism Boards as one. Uh, there's a piece of legislation in the, in the General Assembly right now to do that, uh, and that would help to promote the area in general a little bit better. Uh, I'm told that the room tax from the Bristol County area is only about $40,000 a year, and they really don't have, uh, with that small budget, enough money to really promote them, so it would be much more feasible to put those two, um, uh, boards together, and, uh, in that way, they could promote, uh, Bristol County through Newport County.
Easy. How many appointments do we have at this board?
One. I know many times we struggle to find one qualified candidate.
I understand this has been, uh, there's been opening here for quite some time, and now you have two, two applicants.
Two wonderful applicants who are in position. Any other questions to Mr. Ennis? Well, Billy, it's good to see you getting involved again. Thank you for being here this evening and, uh, I'm sure you'd be considered.
Thank you, President. Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Unfinished business evaluation process for town administrator for town charter, section 407, paragraph five, continued from the July 27 meeting. I think this was, Mr. Leonard was.
Right.
Pushing it, so, uh, entertain a motion to continue that until the next meeting.
Don't move.
Yeah.
But, but if Cecil, I think Cecil's been the, the driving force for this, and do we want to wait till Cecil?
Well, I, as I read the minutes, it was to allow Mr. Gonsalvo to comment on the, uh...
Right, and, and I did review it, and I don't have any comments. I think it's fine the way it is. All right, and still, still entertain a motion to continue this because we'll set the process when, when Mr. Leonard is here and all seven of us, because we'll have time. There is a motion, but now, now we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Councilor Durfee, discuss, discussion for input hearing regarding the main road parking in North Tiverton.
Um, it seemed to me that what one, what we should do is really, um, inform the people in the town that we do have a proposal to consider, um, street parking in the north end of town, and I was mindful of this because we advertise the stop signs throughout the town, and, uh, this is a subsan, substantial change, um, to the town, to the businesses along Main Road, to the residents along Main Road, and it seemed to me that before we took a final step, that we should hear from those folks and also from our own department heads. So, that's why I put it on the agenda, is to develop and hold a public input session, um, that, uh, would, one, allow people to speak one way or the other. What I had in mind was the first meeting in September, but I, I think we do have to advertise rather explicitly. I mean, I think our advertisement should show what is being planned, and, um, but I, I do think that the public has to be heard on this. It affects people in the town. It affects department heads, and I think, if I can use the word, in the interests of transparency, I think we should hold that public comment, um, session.
Uh, we, when we first, in our first discussion, we did have some public comment on the situation. My understanding was that we're working against a time constraint in the fact that this was going to get done immediately following, or the striping was going to get done immediately following the paving. Well, paving's been delayed for whatever reason. I don't know. But, uh, Mr. Spencer, can you?
Yeah, I had a meeting this morning with, uh, Bob Rockio, DOT, and Stiper Styler, who's the, uh, both of those are working on, on this project in particular. This is going back to the Traffic Commission tomorrow for a hearing. Um, they did receive the letter for requesting 11-foot driving lanes and took that into consideration. They added about 30 or 40 spots they were able to do through that. Um, but I think that, you know, um, given the constraints of time, and as I indicated before, the reason for this is public safety, economic development, and good land use, and I think if we put this off, we're going to risk any, uh, chance of getting any parking. So I think they're, they're at that point because their contractor has to have those drawings in place, um, because what I understand is if he doesn't have the drawings ahead of time, and they're, I think they're already a little behind schedule, he can actually sue DOT for that because the package was delivered to him earlier, and now it's a change. So, from what I understand, they're, they're ready to go, and they, they were hoping that they, they would, uh, get this through the Traffic Commission tomorrow, and then I'd be able to coordinate with them after that and get an approval, and I, you know, it, as I said, I've been working with the police chief, um, met with the fire chief, or actually, I didn't meet with the fire chief on this one, but, um, Steve Berlucci, DPW, met with us, um, at, with the representatives from DOT. So, um, what we had asked for was a, was a redesign of the parking, trying to get some more parking, and then those drawings, the police chief and I would take, take a walk and look at all those areas where there might be a public safety issue, so. But I just, I don't know. I, I don't know that there's any time left. I think if you hold a public hearing, and this is not an ordinance issue from what I want, I understand in the ordinance because it's a state road, so, um, the parking is, you know, that's not part of the ordinance right now, and so it's not a change in the ordinance to allow for it.
Can I just respond to that?
Sure.
First of all, it's the public in this town that we serve, and it's the public that has a right to know what we are planning, and I for one do not buy that they haven't finished the paving on Main Road to even begin the strike. I think if we say, listen, we want to have some public knowledge and input in this before the town goes forward with this, I think that should be done. And, um, I don't think for one moment the state cannot, um, I mean, the paving has been a little dilatory, uh, period, but this is a substantial change, and if we advertise the one stop sign on one street, we're going to affect things along Main Road, whether it's trucks going in and out of Humphreys, whether it's fire trucks coming down the road, whether it's snowing, whether the snowplows are going in a different direction. I think we have a right to be heard, not a right to be heard. I think we require public to know what is being anticipated before we make that final decision.
I'll just say again, I think that, I think there is an inherent risk in there, so, of losing all, all parking, so.
Maybe we'll, we'll take the risk.
Okay, well.
Well, I do have a question, Mr. Spencer.
Sure.
And I wanted to see whether this is a possible compromise with the Department of Transportation. It, it, believe me, I drove up and down Main Road four times today, just so I had it clear as to where the parking was, where it wasn't going to be. And in all honesty, I came away with the idea that you need parking for your vision, and I, and I, I understand your vision, uh, I think it's great, but realistically, in my lifetime, you need parking on Main Road roughly, I think, from State Road to Christopher's Restaurant. Now, once you get past there, I dr, I, I did, I, in all honesty, I drove up and down four times. I couldn't figure, fathom a reason why anybody would ever park on Main Road in my lifetime in, on any other stretch, now until you get down to, you know, with the, with the Stone Bridges. But from Christopher's to State Line, I said, this is exactly what Spencer, I think, is, I, I can see Spencer's vision here, but when I got further down the road, I'm saying, not in my lifetime. I mean, there's no rush to do anything, and I, and I guess my thought on a compromise is, i-if we're really under the gun with the Department of Transportation, can we work out a compromise where at least an obvious spot like between Christopher's and State Line can be done right away? I mean, if there's that urgency to it, and we take up Ms. Durfee's suggestion for more public input on any other spot on Main Road?
Well, unfortunately, because of the road widths in that area, that, that's really where, where the parking is the most problematic. That is where the, where the road tends to be the narrowest, and even in their initial drawings, before we even went to them for parking, there was very limited parking in that area. Um, that's why I asked for the reduction in the lane width. They're still insisting on a four-foot shoulder width, which, which limits us. Um, but, you know, again, the, the vision is not just for, for the buildings and the businesses you see there, but it's for trying to create the redevelopment potential, and I do have.
I understand exactly.
I do have developers who.
That's why I said, not in my lifetime.
Right, but it, well, I, I think.
The vision is great. The vision is great, but I don't see a rush to it really.
Well, I think, I think that's, uh, I, I've been approached by developers who are interested in doing that kind of development in areas where you would not think there was a need for parking, and, and those, those are what we're trying to do, is create those little pockets of opportunity.
But we could still take up Ms. Durfee's suggestion. I mean, that's not going to happen before September 1st. What I'm saying is, your plan makes a lot of sense to me right up to Christopher's Restaurant. Let's move as fast as we can. I can't believe anybody would be opposed to some sort of parking program along that road.
But it is.
But once you get past there, I, I ju, I literally went up and down four times, and I'm going to be fair about this. I went up and down, up and down, up and down. I couldn't figure a rational reason to park anyplace else. I mean, if you're pa, if you're going to the cemetery, you're going to park on Main Road. If you're going to one of the drugstores, you're not going to park on Main Road. You go up to the post office, you're not going to park on Main Road.
Some of those properties that are on Main Road that currently are residences are in a commercial zone and could become, you know, offices and so forth. As a matter of fact, one of them has, right near the cemetery, what was a residence is now, uh, I, I believe, a counseling center, you know, they got a couple of spots, you know, inside that they, they put in a driveway, but, uh, you know.
At that point, we could, uh, re-strike at that point. That was necessary.
Well, we don't, well, we don't get that opportunity to do this. We've run into, we've run into issues before, and it took a long time to get some re-striping done down in the area where, uh, Standish Boatyard was because we had some parking issues down there, and there was no parking. Moved lanes over, and that took a long time. We didn't do the public hearing process and so forth. When we redid those, it was something to be done because, you know, there was a business issue down there. One is by ordinance, and I agree, when, stop signs are by ordinance. You, if they're not by ordinance, you can't give someone a ticket for, for passing it, but, you know, the discussion was, and unfortunately, you weren't here at the meeting when the discussion was, when we talked about, do we submit this? Do we submit this letter? Do we give him the go-ahead based on his plans? And that was the vote of the council on that night. If we're going to change, if we're going to change that, we'll, we'll take another vote to change it, but that was why this letter was sent, because it was the consensus of the council that this had, was going to be done and going to be done based on what it transpired.
Right, and what I'm saying is the consensus of the council is such that, um, uh, public, the right of the public to be heard on this, um, because it does, I mean, a lot of that area along there is residential, and a lot of it, I think I agree with you, uh, Mr. Lambert does not lend itself to double parking, uh, whether it's the cemetery, whether it's right in front of Humphreys, whether it's right in front of Bank America, um, there's areas that literally do not, do not lend itself to it, and I'm just one person, but I drive, I've driven up that way to CBS, I don't know how many times in my life. So, you sort of know the road, and, um, but it does affect the people in this town, people in the north end, and the existing businesses. So, I think we need that public statement, and whether it's from our own chiefs or whether it's from the public who live along there, or people on the south end or the middle end, I don't care, but I think we need that public input. And if you balance one stop sign versus doing a very substantial change to the town, the scales, scales of justice lean toward public disclosure.
And I think we have that. At our first meeting, we had this thing on the agenda. It was on the agenda. We, we took. it was on the agenda. We took public input, we discussed it. We originally gave the permission to submit the letter asking for the parking, came back, when they came back and told us that it had been reduced, or they reduced the number, Mr. Spencer asked, Mr. Spencer asked for further. I'm just telling you, no problem, we get the motion, we take another vote on this. It doesn't, you know, I mean, but I'm just saying, to say we didn't have, to say we didn't have public-
We didn't have a vote that we would not have a public hearing.
No, we didn't. But what I'm saying is, we took input when we first brought this up, and then took a vote after listening to some people, because there were some people who objected to what they thought were problems there. The fact that Mr. Spencer got together with DPW and the police chief to make sure that they were going to be the safety issues, I don't have a problem. And like I say, there was another vote taken before this letter was signed, asking them to take a second look at this. And it was the consensus at that, on that evening prior to this letter being signed, that it was to give Mr. Spencer the right to go ahead and proceed with this, based on the drawings he had provided the council. And that's what we did.
Can I, I'd say a few things. It seems to me that when we began this discussion, the idea was to inquire the deal in the Department of Transportation about putting parking spaces in. And since that matter was taken, it seemed to snowball. There was nothing in our initial action that said we're going to have 140 or 400 parking spaces, but that's where it has gone. I am against narrowing travel lanes to provide parking. I think that is dangerous, that is not safe. I can see kids running between the cars, and you don't have a chance to see them and stop. With a wider travel lane, I think you have more of a chance. So, while I appreciate the fact that there are economic things to be taken into consideration and all the rest, I think safety is first. In making travel lanes narrow in order to provide parking, I would be against, I would vote against that kind of a thing. I've read all the literature that you've published, Mr. Spencer, and the maps, I couldn't follow the maps. I finally gave up on them. Print on them was very, extremely small, and I could identify a few roads, but I didn't know what was going on until far as those maps were concerned. But it still takes me back in general to this unhappiness now about insisting that we get 400 when we asked them in the first place to consider it. You know, I don't know that we, did we agree on 400 parking spaces? I don't believe we have.
No, there was never, there was never any talk about that. What we asked for was a study, and I, they, at that point, they hadn't done anything. So I went through, and I measured the entire road for the as-built conditions to see if any of the curb lines had changed. I went back and spent a few days doing all the drawings to see where, based on smart growth principles and safety, where I thought parking could be accommodated. I submitted those drawings to them at the same point they were bringing drawings to us. So there was a difference between 440 and 140. And I, what I asked for them, 12-foot driving lane is a highway standard. That's an interstate standard. That's not a city or, you know, an urban area standard. And again, I gave you the literature in terms of the safety of narrowing lanes and slowing traffic. The pedestrian fatality rate at 20 miles an hour is about 5 percent. At 45 miles an hour, it's 95 percent. So there is a direct correlation between travel lanes and traffic speed and public safety. And it's the opposite of what many people think. So that, you know, that's what, the way I approached it, and what I said was, you know, if I, if I could identify 440 spots, they were identifying 140 with the 12-foot lanes, maybe there was a room for some increase in the 140. I'm not trying to get them to 440, because I realize with their standard of 11-foot lane, which is the narrowest they wanted to go down to, we're not going to get there. But again, the, you know, it was a, it was a three-fold argument for this: economic development, land use, and public safety. I looked into all three of those, and I think I covered it pretty thoroughly. And I, you know, I went to DOT with the blessing of the council, and I spent the time negotiating with them and working with them and trying to work this out. And, you know, now, now I have to tell them, "Put everything on hold," and it certainly puts me in an awkward position with them.
I'm sorry about that.
Insofar as, as public safety is concerned, it's all well and good, but you are the town planner. You are not the fire chief or the police chief. And I have not heard from the fire chief with regard to the, with the fire truck. I have not heard from Mr. Berlucci with regard to snowplows on 11-foot. I just think we need to hear from not only the people that head up these departments, as well as you, but I think we also need to hear from the public.
I have to say that I've gotten questions by people that have been concerned about the whole plan and how all of that would work on Main Road, and didn't feel that the parking on Main Road would be beneficial, only because of how it would narrow the road and what, how people would navigate that and thus and such. I don't know. I can just see that, you know, if it's taken this long to get that whole road done, I can't see how two more weeks, is that what you're planning, Mr.?
I said the first meeting in September.
Right, so that's two weeks from now?
Well, no, it's a little, maybe it's-
Three.
Is it three? Oh, because of the holidays. And I, I do, I would like to see an ad, at least as of this point, saying, "This is what is being proposed." And if we have to spend a little money to do it, so be it.
Well, you know, following up on what Ms. Durfee is saying, maybe it would make a sense, a good sense, to put a map together and show where all of this parking would be-
I agree, yeah.
-all along Main Road. I mean, I'll admit myself, I really didn't get interested in this subject almost until today. But I, and as I say, I understand your vision, I think it's great. But I'm not so sure the town is ready for it yet, or that it makes sense once you get beyond that area of Christopher's. As a matter of fact, even on the safety issue, you're driving down Main Road, think of this. Nobody ever expects to see a car. You never see a car illegally parked along that area. Nobody would ever park on Main Road to go to any one of those businesses. And now suddenly, you're driving for a mile or so completely free, nothing, no obstructions at all, and suddenly some kook for some reason is parked on Main Road. I mean, it's almost, it almost turns into an obstruction once you get past that area of north, north Tiverton. That was the reaction I gave.
You know, I have to say, Chris, I fully appreciate, you know, your vision and what you're trying to plan, but I just can't see, you know, what, what difference it would make if, if we just took the time to just get more input from the people in the town, since I've heard from people on the subject.
Mr. Spencer, do we know what the exact timeline is, number one, for the paving, and what their requirements are to get the drawings for when?
No, I didn't, I didn't get a answer from them today. All I know is that they were going to the Traffic Commission yes, or tomorrow, and had hoped to be able to turn around and get approval, you know, and meet with our approval right away. So, I don't know exactly what their timeframe is. I know it's already pushed back a month because of this, because they were going to have, they had, it was scheduled for the last month's Traffic Commission meeting. So, you know, again, this is, this is why I started this whole thing with a little bit of the vision, and that's why I gave the presentation during the workshop. This is also not just my vision. This is an outgrowth of the years that were spent in the design standard project. This really meets with that, you know, bringing the buildings closer, looking at the redevelopment potential, and then looking at having businesses that are closer provide access alongside streets and behind the buildings, cut down on the number of curb cuts. So, you know, again, this is a first stab at this, and, you know, this is, this is the time to do it. So, I can't give you an answer to say whether they're going to wait or not wait. So all I'm saying is, from what I understand, three or four weeks, I don't know where we're going to be.
I've never had any praise for the work you do. You do excellent work, and I, I may be incorrectly tasked you on a couple of occasions. You do a tremendous job. But you need to know that on this particular project, it isn't that you've done a poor job, or that, or that your vision is incorrect. But there are some who feel, the way I think I do, we don't want anything that's, the traffic in this town is getting heavier and heavier. If we're going to make narrow lanes, it's going to slow it down even more. I mean, I remember when I moved into this town 40 years ago, on my way home, I rarely saw a car coming in the opposite direction. Now it's getting crowded. And with trucks, and maybe fire engines and other things going up and down Main Road, I don't know where the 440 spaces are located, I'll be honest with you. And I don't know where the 140 are located either, because I haven't seen a map that I could spend enough time with that would give me those answers.
But just-
I'm in favor of a public hearing, and maybe other people feel the same way that I do. But as I say, safety is a first consideration. Narrow travel lanes with parking on both sides of this creek, especially in North Tiverton, is a recipe for danger.
Not to belabor the point again, but, you know, the, the volume of traffic, just as, by way of comparison, that's about a 9,000 vehicle per day trip along Main Road. Hope Street in Bristol carries almost 18,000, twice as many cars. The driving lanes there are about nine and a half feet, with seven and a half to eight-foot parking lanes. So, you know, and they manage to do it with, with a pretty good record for public safety, so, and good.
Mr. Spencer, Bristol also has Mediacombe Avenue. And we have one main street through the town for-
Fish Road.
Well, Fish Road does not get you through the, to the, to the businesses and takes you to Fall River, and CBS, and Shores, and all the other places. But it is well different than Bristol. And also, our center is very different. So, I'm going to make a motion, since I put this on the agenda, that we do hold a public input session on the first meeting in September. But that presumes that we have publicized a map showing at least what is projected. And that has to be done before we can hold, I think, our hearing. So, if we can do that, then my motion is for the first meeting in September.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to second. I don't think we're going to publish the maps. I think the map should be available, advertisements stating the maps are available, either at Town Hall or someplace, if you're going to do that. Because I think it's going to be extremely costly to publish the maps. It's going to be like one of our zoning amendments where we'd have to publish, you know, I mean, when you talk about a stretch of road that encompasses about four miles, and you want to show-
Are you looking to notify your butters as well?
No, I think, I think, but I do think we have to give real notice. And real notice has, I mean, the council doesn't have a map. Do you have a map? Do we have a map?
Yes.
Yeah, provided drawings.
We do have a map.
And it's available for us. Well, somehow, that map, I think, has to translate into a sizable notice. I really do.
Again, you're dealing with four miles of road. You know, in terms of the notice, I don't think there's any way that we can shrink that down unless it's a full-page ad, and it's going to be very tiny to indicate where that parking is going to be. It'd have to be a very simplified graphic, you know, and it's going to take a little bit of time to put something together. And I don't know that it's going to give the right amount of information at that scale.
Well, certainly tell people what is being proposed.
I think an advert, an advertisement, if you're going to do an advertisement to say that the maps are available at Town Hall or some other place in town, Mr. Spencer's office, wherever, and people can come and look at them, because I do believe that, from the maps that were given to us, that you're going to have trouble trying to break that down into a publishable thing without going to two or three pages.
The drawings themselves were on 16, or 13 sheets, originally, with two, two per page.
Well, I have those. I have the initial maps, okay? But the state came back and said, "We'll approve 140," etc.
Right. And the state, when the state broke it down, they gave me three pages or three different ones. So, they've shrunk it down by using some aerials and, rather than the AutoCAD drawings.
So, we've gone from 12 to three pages, right?
Well, what I'm saying is, at three pages, it's very small, and that's where the, where you guys are having an issue with it.
Well, I, I'm going to ask then, that as part of that, that the town clerk and the solicitor work to put together an ad that is really, would help people with the help of Mr. Spencer.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Well, I, I think some of the issues are, what is the total number of parking spots that we're going to end up with? And we know it's not going to be 440, and we're hoping that it's more than 140. And I think the issue of printing maps in the paper would be much, much difficult. I've seen some zoning things from our own town, from other towns, where you can't figure out heads or tails where it is, what it is, or whatever. And I agree with Mr. Bowlen there, that we should instruct in the ad, telling that maps are available, and then saying what sections of town are going to be affected. And I think if you say it's from State Road to the 24 interchange, or from whatever, that it gives a better idea of where it will be, you know?
Could be substantial, double parking from-
It's not double parking.
-to the State Line.
Parking both sides.
Yeah. And I just, we could do that comment. I, I think the issue of the 11-foot is also going to be part of this.
Right.
And, because I haven't, I don't think any, we've heard from the fire chief on issues or-
No, but I think we did, we did hear from the police chief. And I will tell you, I've driven up and down Main Road, and I will tell you, I think if you narrow it, you're going to slow traffic down. And I think that's what we need to do, because that's turning into a drag strip. The only thing that keeps them going slow now is the broken pavement.
My two cents, Laura. As far as advertising for the map, personally, I would want to know how much that's going to cost and where it's going to come from, because we do have a lot of rezoning coming up, I think, that's going to be expensive. And along that line, can we start a trend by putting up easels with perhaps some of Mr. Spencer's vision, with the design, and how this parking would fit into it, so that, rather than saying the map is available at the town clerk's office, have it up, so when people go into the assessors, or the clerks, or the tax collector's office, it's right there, and everyone can pay attention to it and might pique someone's interest.
Chief.
Mr. Bowlen, may I speak, please?
Yes.
I, I agree with what Mr. Spencer is trying to do, that we do need to help commerce up there, and we do need to do parking to try to get more of, more parking, more people in that area. But as the fire chief, I haven't seen this plan, I haven't seen the maps of it, but I do have grave concerns about narrowing those width of those lanes to 11 feet. You drive a truck yourself, sir. You're a 10-foot mirror to mirror. 11-foot, that's if all the cars are on the side, and I've given you a graphic of it, will give you six inches between mirrors on trucks passing. I understand the need to slow things down on that road, but I do have grave concerns about my apparatus going up and down that road and the safety to the general public. I'm not sure what the answer is, I just know that I'm very concerned about it. Specifically, we go down Main Road, when we go by Coastal Roaster, as close as it is there, everything has to come to a stop, specifically when opposing traffic is coming. It gives no room for cars to go anywhere. The pictures that I've given you, I tried to put two trucks side by side so that you could see a comparison. The cones are placed at 22 feet apart, and the trucks are placed between it, trying to hit the center of each one of those lanes. If either truck is off by a little bit, or parking on the side is off, we have disaster. Again, I, I understand where we're trying to go, but I just need to voice my concern. I'm very concerned about the 11-foot width.
Here's a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries four to two. Business Caroline Leveque, Rhode Island Team Race Association, requests permission to hold regatta at Fogland on September 19th and 20th, approved by Tiverton Recreation Committee.
Can I just add, what kind of boats are these? I know they're sailboats, what?
They're Vanguard 15s. They're built by Vanguard Sailbook and Laser Performance in Portsmouth, Rhode Island. And they're 15 feet long, don't have very tall masts, and they go come out of the water every night on aluminum dollies. So they're portable.
And where would they be, where would they go, out in the river?
Um, yeah, I actually have a little map printed out off the, give you an idea of where we, we have two sailing areas, and actually on the reverse side is the emergency action plan, which might be something that people have questions about. But this is where we're planning this map, thanks to everyone. It would be tucked into the area just south of- But this is where we're planning, this is the map, thanks to everyone. It would be tucked into the area just south of, sort of the residential area of Fogland is our primary sailing area. Conditions don't allow for us to sail there, and it might be safer, or more protected, or better breeze direction to sail on the north end, we would relocate to the north end of, to the other opposite side of Fogland. We're planning on keeping the boats right on the beach, where you can see there's a small sailboat drawn, where we hopefully plan on keeping the boats.
How many do you expect? How many boats?
Um, we will have 12 boats.
This is the total sailing area?
Um, it's very approximate. I had a hard time judging how large.
Seems to me to be rather small.
It's a very small course. The races are about nine to 12 minutes, so it's.
It's as big as the lane.
I'll make a motion that we approve of this, Council.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. You said that they'll be transporting the boats in on aluminum trailers, I assume, right?
Yes, the boats will, will all be provided by the Rhode Island Team Racing Association, and we'll be using three-boat trailers to bring the boats down to the beach, but those trailers will be stored elsewhere.
That, that, that was my question, I was gonna say, where are the trailers gonna be, okay?
Caroline's house. Or backyard.
Is that zoned for that? No, only kidding.
We have a motion is second. Further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor? I guess you're gonna have a regatta.
Thank you very much. We look forward to having everybody who's interested. Sling by, it is very fun to watch, so we're hoping that it maybe attracts some beachgoers to take a peek.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Councilman Lambeth.
This is a request to invite our local senator and representatives Logland and Edwards to address the town council. You may recall, the last time they were here, they, they indicated that they would be happy to come at any time on our invitation. For, for a number of reasons, I think it's just timely. We're having a break between sessions. As I indicate here, the nature of the request is simply to review the highlights and achievements of the last legislative session and update us on what we can expect in the next session of the General Assembly. No other purpose.
Then we can request the clerk to send those invitations? And which meeting would you like him at?
Uh, I, it, it doesn't make much difference. I think we should give him perhaps a month's notice.
Well, I think, aren't they, aren't they gonna convene again in September?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be a good idea if they were available to get it done, the, the last meeting of the month?
Well, if they can make it on that.
No, that's, that's the, that's the Monday after, yeah. But we have a meeting before that. I'm only saying, I think two weeks, two weeks' notice would be, you know, sufficient time, but if they start again in September, they'll have an excuse for not attending. So, I would think that we'd have to.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we don't need a motion, we just request the clerk to send the invitation for that. Why don't we just request the clerk to send the invitation for the last meeting in August?
The August, you, you keep in mind that you have the zoning.
Well, the last meeting is September, you know.
Well, no, see, September, I'm afraid that, I, I'm hearing, I'm hearing that they're, you know, getting back together in September.
Yeah, I, I just thought, I heard you say that you gave them a month's notice.
Well, I know you wanted to give them a month's notice, but I'm saying, I'm only looking for, if they're still out of session.
Oh, that's fine. I have, I have.
Yeah, that's what I'm, my thinking is.
When they reconvene.
Yeah, they, that's fine.
I think that's a moving target, I understand.
Well, I understand, but they're talking September. But when I'm here in September, I just don't wanna see them be back in session, and then we lose the opportunity to get this.
Well, we'll make it in two weeks, and if they can, or can't make it, we'll, we'll talk to two, or we'll talk to one.
So, a formal request for the 24.
I'll set it accordingly.
Right, yes.
If they can.
Right, okay, thank you.
Town clerk, presentation on authorization to purchase clerk-based public information system.
Yes, um, I think the program kind of speaks for itself. We have a presentation of the addresses representing courts. It's a program that we've been to a few communities, communities are using it. I look at it as kind of a search engine, and people coming in, who spend a lot of time going back through, an integrated system of indexing what was held on the meetings, this is gonna put the backup index right out there for anybody to be able to search that can use a computer.
Thank you. Dennis Grotto, Senior Account Manager for Clerkbase, and I'd like to thank Nancy and Council for providing me this opportunity. As Nancy mentioned, Clerkbase is a Rhode Island-based company. We offer to many municipalities a full text retrieval system. This is an online-based program. It allows full search access to the documents that we have online. You have a full search engine for agendas, minutes. We do multiple boards. All of this is posted by us, maintained by us on our own servers. The town does a link on their website, which you already have from the clerk's site, for agendas and minutes. That would open up the Clerkbase site, and we take care of all the work. The agenda process doesn't need to change, the minutes process doesn't need to change, the information is forwarded to me, I take care of processing it, turning it into an online format, publishing it on the web, which gives the public full access all the time. They don't have to deal with waiting for the clerk's office to open, if they're up in the middle of the night, want to search for something, it's there. If they're, you know, out of town, they want to search for something, it's there. So, this allows everyone to search all the time. We've lost our resolution size with it. Give me a minute to resize these. We did take the last meeting, and I put together a Tibbetan site, so I'm gonna show you briefly the Tibbetan agenda for the last meeting, for this meeting, and for the minutes for the July 27th meeting. Obviously, it's on the screen here. I don't. I'm gonna do a demonstration with Middletown, just so you can see it going across multiple boards as well. We had the screen size set, but it's been dormant for a little while, so the projector is making it a little small. As you can see, the initial page has search tips, getting started, frequently asked questions. I had to clip the screen size a little bit, but all the information that the public might need for searching our system, free tools that might make viewing some of these documents easier, they're all available on the main page. You have a table of contents in the left-hand frame, shows you the agenda files. When we click on that, it opens up the agenda right there. Same thing with the minutes file. The power of Clerkbase allows us to do the supporting documentations for your agenda as hyperlink attachments within the text online. We then transfer those attachments to the meeting minutes, once the meeting minutes are completed and online, and we take the agenda down, because you no longer need the agenda. You can see, in this main frame, we've got several attachments for your supporting documentations. Minutes for the regular council meeting, you click on that, it's gonna pop open a viewer, which is not working on the Wi-Fi, but that will have the documentation for each individual item. It allows you to print, save, do whatever you need with any of those supporting documentations while you're online. Basically, what we do is we aggregate all your information, we host charter code, we work actually with most of the codification companies, including municipal code we contract with. So, we'll take the code, charter, publish those online as well. You can see on the left-hand frame, we have a charter, charter-related laws, town code book, and then a folder for the agenda, folder for the minutes. We keep ordinance and resolutions books, so you have, excuse me, so you have all those passed but not yet codified and put into books, available and searchable as well. And I'm gonna show you briefly with Middletown, how we're able to search across multiple boards all at once. Just have to resize this one quick. Middletown has a lawyer that they deal with regularly. I'm gonna use his last name in the search. You'll see the search results at the bottom, and I apologize again for the screen size being a little off with the projector. In general, this is up fully, fully sized on your screen. But this hit list at the bottom here, and crammed in right here, shows you meetings across multiple boards. So, the top of that list is a town council meeting. See, that first document is regular council, and then as we move down, it goes across planning board, and finally, at the end, there's a zoning board meeting as well. So, this is gonna give your public transparency, that's what everyone's talking about, Clerkbase provides it. You're gonna have everything they might need available online all the time. The search engine allows you to do an advanced search as well, and this is where the clerk's office especially gets a boost, that their time is spent going through old documents, looking through books, trying to find things. If they don't remember where it is, it can take a day to find something. With Clerkbase, they're gonna find it right away. The search options under advanced allow you to hone down your search. We now have checkboxes on the left-hand frame here, so they can say, I don't really need town code, I don't really need town charter, I'll just check this box for the town council minutes, 'cause that's all I wanna search, and I'll be able to search just the town council minutes. And the same thing applies, if we do the search for that same lawyer, it's only gonna give us one or two results. So, we have one to three results instead, as you can see here. So, we allow the clerks and anyone who might use this product more frequently, a more advanced search that allows them to really hone down what they're looking at, making sure they're not getting a lot of results that they don't need. We currently work with 16, just over 16 Rhode Island municipalities, including some of your neighbors on the island, with Newport, Middletown, not on the same island, but Jamestown. And we have several other accounts, public utilities, commissions, workers' comp decisions. So, we have a pretty good base of clients within Rhode Island.
How far back do you go?
As far back as you would like us to. What we do is an annual subscription going forward, and we handle years past as historical projects, so we can take chunks of years at a time and load them on as well as the town has a little bit of extra budget room, excuse me, or particular issues that they know they need certain years up for. But we can go back as far as you request. Any other questions?
So, basically, what you would do is just take Nancy's hot copy of, of like minutes and, and agenda and whatever backup, and then, what do you, do you just scan them, and you just turn them into PDFs, I guess, or?
Yes, actually, Nancy had talked about scanning and sending to us that way, but yes, I take the digital files we work with for everything, but I'll take that, the, the agenda file, a Microsoft Word document, convert it to an online format, and we publish it that way. And then we take all the supporting documentation, which will probably be scanned here, sent to me in PDF, but we can use any file format, PDFs, TIPS, JPGs, whatever it might be.
So, what we see here as your system proposal, in, in the terms of cost, this would only include the town council?
Correct.
Minutes? It does, it wouldn't include planning board, or zoning board, or anything?
Correct.
That would be an additional?
Correct.
The boards could add on to that, but at this point, we're not looking at it on, or in line of efforts right now.
And the cost is based on a number of factors, including number of meetings per year, number of attachments per meeting, so the planning or zoning may not meet as frequently, might be a little less costly. We would put together proposals for any of those boards, as well as, as the town needed.
This quote includes special meetings and workshops. I think we've got five or six workshops and special meetings in there as well. Four to six special meetings and three to four workshops, so it's like seven extra meetings besides.
So, the pile of minutes that we all keep.
You would, it's not only that, it would be index. So, what you can't see this in years is really not the best to, to.
Yeah, I could, I could.
It's highlighted in Woo, so if you typed in, no bin, no barrel, that's what you want, it would just go back and you could click on every set of minutes that affected it, everything, it's just a search engine, it's gonna pull up everything. So, the time, though, that the clerk's office spends researching, and I have to tell you, the, we have been very lucky in there with people that have far better memories than I do, and Doris is very good, but it takes her hours. If you request something, and sometimes it'll say, keep going back, and researches, and it, it takes hours sometimes for that clerk at that rate, even looking through it, it's kind of an antiquated.
If you wanted to go back and say, bond resolutions.
Then it'll pick up every bond resolution. It doesn't, it doesn't give by date reach, though, does it?
Uh, the results are actually sortable at the bottom of the screen here, where I have document. We have document location and hit percentage. The.
Fifty-two hundred.
It allows you to sort the results based on the most recent document, or by the most number of hits within a document, and also by folder. So, if you have council, agenda, planning, zoning, you can sort by those levels as well. So, it allows you search options that, if you search for anything, the results are sortable based on whatever criteria you might need. We, we put in essentially what you see on any website, where you have multiple methods to find results. You have buttons such as next hit or previous hit, you have the list at the bottom, which gives us a document name, and we can just click on that document. Now, you can see here, we did get one where it's highlighting the word I searched for. In the text, it'll do that as well, but it's, it's under here, and because of the screen size that I've had to reduce it to, this is not stretched across, and it's covering a little bit of what we would normally see.
And you need to keep in mind, if we say we do go with this, if Councilor Sgram going this way, and we start, say, September 1st, with our September meeting, he has agreed to go back to January of this year, putting all documentation behind it. And then, in, in other years going back, it would be the minutes only, the agenda minutes, it wouldn't be.
The backup.
Backup. But if we did handle an item that was a bond issue, it doesn't matter how much of this backup is there, that whole bond issue would be put on as a backup, and.
Yeah, bond resolution.
But, I mean, it's only a starting place, you gotta start somewhere to move on.
We can tailor Clerkbase to whatever our clients' needs are. We can do attachments for every meeting, we can do just the important attachments, like Nancy's alluding to, where you need this certain referendum's up, those can be added. And for the most part, we do an average with that proposal, where it's 24 meetings, five to six specials, 10 to 20 attachments. We're not gonna count attachments, we're not gonna count meetings, we're gonna put up the information that needs to be up. If suddenly the council is meeting four times a year instead of twice a year, then we might have to read us of the contract. But in general, we use averages, so we can get important information up as the clerk and the town council see fit within the, you know, within the range of the contract.
And how long will all that data stay up there?
It's permanent. As long as you continue to contract with us, that data is available. So, as we go forward, all the years are staying there with the minutes and the attachments, because we're gonna do the annual contract.
We must have a massive server.
We do.
Dennis, I would hate this to happen, but you did state that should something happen that I'm gonna have to be going to the Budget Committee for future years on funding and all of this?
Yeah.
And if we have a year where there's a crisis here, and we don't have the funding, we would simply write a letter to you, and that would be it.
Right.
You know? We have, or we have on it, we wouldn't continue. So, it's not like we're, Dennis said it, but I certainly intend to work on the Budget Committee for the importance of the program. And that's the idea, and I don't wanna do a few years, and then be, I'm just saying the obligation would end with it.
I'm ready for a motion.
Me too.
I'll make a motion that we authorize town clerk to proceed with the Clerkbase program.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
I think.
Town administrator. Announcements, comments, and questions?
I had a meeting with, this is a recreation, Bogamash Field update. I had a meeting with Joseph Dias, and essentially, what we discussed was, we submitted, we submitted a, an invoice for some $30,000 against this $18,000 grant, and he did view the progress at Bogamash Field, and we asked him to. And he did view the progress at Bogomash Field, and we asked him to kind of like expedite it a little bit, so that we can get some cash flow. And he agreed to. We agreed that we would, and we did, the next morning, send a letter asking to increase the $18,000 grant to $75,000. And he thought that Director Sullivan would accept that. And so, the wheels continue to be in motion on moving forward with the refurbishment of Bogomash Field. The second thing is, I'm going to take advantage of the fact that Chief Blakey is not here right now. There was a complaint that we had received, that he had done quite a bit of work in investigation. And I received an email from a Natalie Borelli, who works for Future Properties. And she, her comments were that the chief is very knowledgeable, he's a patient person, he has a professional manner, he's caring and values his position in serving the community. So I thought that it would be nice to announce that, especially when he's not here, so his face wouldn't turn red. Abatements, the total abatements to date, these are just a few, a few announcements. The abatements, including what we did, what the council did this evening, total $37,971.91 so far this fiscal year. Tax collections. The tax collections have, the value, we slipped a little, but the percentage of the levy has increased. The last report was that we were, I believe, $130,000 behind the previous year, and we were 1.26% behind the levy. At this point, this is as of today, we are $182,000 behind in actual dollars collected. But the percentage of the levy has come to within .31%. So although the dollars fall a little short, the percentage, we're, we're getting better. Actually, I'm sorry, the dollars, $182,000 ahead of last year, not behind, ahead. Okay? But the percentage, we are behind .31% instead of 1.26. So we seem to be gaining some ground, which I'm happy to report some good news for a change.
Are those, that report going to be given to the council?
Sure.
That's a good plan.
Main Road. They will be coal planning the remaining portion of Main Road on August the 13th and August the 14th. And for the southern end, they will detour traffic to Fish Road. And from the north, they will detour traffic to Church Street, for information. They will go down State Avenue. And there's a puzzle book. If you're coming in from the north, they will turn right onto State Avenue, travel west, and then they will detour onto Cliff Street, Hilton Street, and then Church Street, all the way to Borden Road, and then they will return up to Main Road. I can, I can distribute this.
That would, that would be nice. I was going to send you down, Cliff is a tiny one-way street in the north end, and I go down Hilton. We're not one way, both ways? Okay, but Cliff is a narrow street in the north end, then down Hilton. Hilton stops at Shoof.
You're going the other?
You're coming south.
West, talking about west.
No, you're taking a right onto, if you take a right onto State Avenue, coming, coming south.
Coming in from Fall River.
Coming in from Fall River.
You take a right onto State Avenue, you'd be traveling west.
Right, you're going to take, then you're going to take.
Then you're going to take a left onto Cliff Street, you'd be traveling south.
I think maybe you should.
Yeah.
Get copies of that.
And coming north, coming north, they're going to send you where?
Over to Fish Road.
Up what street? From Sousa?
They're going to send you up Warren Avenue, to Fish, and then down Connecticut.
Where's Mrs. Odell?
Well, but the coal planning, the coal planning, it's, right now, it stops at the cemetery. Warren Avenue is north of the cemetery. So now they're going to detour you where you, where they're working.
This is the state DOT.
Okay.
Probably a nice thing, too.
I'm sure it is a nice. And they did a terrible job when they did this last section, because they allowed traffic to go one way up on the opposite side of the road, and they have nobody to let anybody coming out of any side street know what was going on, turning south, right into oncoming traffic in your lane. I'm sure this is going to be fun. Stay home on the 13th and 14th aboard Main Road. But it's, you know.
One more issue. If the council would authorize the wastewater commission to address the council on the night of August 31st, the workshop, they would like to speak to the council regarding...
Yeah, we have to add it to the agenda. That takes a motion.
I will make the motion that they be added to the agenda for August 31st.
Aye, second.
Motion made and seconded, add wastewater management to discuss the sewer district with the council at the workshop on August 31st. The motion's made and seconded, discussion.
You were going to say with regards to?
I just did. With regard to discussion of a sewer district. Motion made and seconded, no further discussion. All those in favor? That's added to the 31st workshop.
Thank you. I have nothing else.
I have a question. The, and this really, I had some questions for the town treasurer. Unfortunately, he is not here tonight, but I want to make sure this doesn't pass, so that on the agenda for next week, on the draft 6:30 report, I did have some questions. But Jim, maybe you could answer this question. We were advised in the spring that the trust was going to give a dividend. Do you know if that dividend ever arrived?
Yes, it did.
And when did it arrive?
Oh, I can't, I can't remember exactly when.
And where was it plugged into the report?
I don't remember that either, but I can.
Okay. I can ask the town treasurer. I mean, that's one of several questions. How much was it? Do you recall?
It may have been, because we also got something from GHGRI, the Health Group. If you promised not to hold me to it, I guess around $30,000.
Not sizable. Okay. Well.
I am recalling.
Now that, now that I'm thinking about it, it may be that we asked them to apply it to our next premium, which would be the premium for this year.
I understand, but we would have reported it as income revenue, I assume, on the revenue statement, so that we are...
No, I don't think we would have. It would have just come to us as a reduction in the premium, a reduction in cost.
That, let's just find out.
Yeah. Please give us a report on how it was handled.
Okay.
The amount of dollars handled.
Any other comment from the council, council announcements, comments, questions?
I have a, I have a couple of comments, maybe they're questions, I don't know yet. But I just wondered, to whom we owed a tremendous amount of gratitude for the streetlights on Fish Road and the streetlights on Main Road? I can't think of a worse thing to happen in those two locations, because all it does is slow down traffic. I don't know that it's helping anything. My comment. You know, I understand, though, I learned tonight that the Fish Road lights are only going to be there for four years, and that's during the construction of the, of the bridge.
Traffic lights?
I don't know.
You said streetlights, the traffic lights.
Yeah.
Okay, because it's a little confusing. I agree with you. I think the one that they placed on Fish Road is the most useless thing. And until they have construction going on on the bridge, and wish to have, you know, no delay back up onto 24, that should be flashing until that time. You are stopping traffic on Fish Road to allow one car to exit that would be able to exit in a couple of seconds, and you're creating, you know, fuel waste by, by stopping that traffic. That light was put there, and I, when I saw it go up, I thought that was what it was going to be for, was for construction. When they turned it on, a year before, they're going to have the construction turning down or cutting off the other exit. I think it's crazy. But, once again, when DOT wants to do something, we don't get any information from the state when they're going to do something. But they want us to jump through hoops when we want something. Very unfortunate. Open up a can of worm stock. Any other council announcements or comments? And it's the town solicitor's turn.
Nothing.
Very good. Then it's time to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion, we're going to executive session, discuss litigation for so under 42, 46, 582.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
And to stay in executive session, discuss collective bargaining under 42, 46, 582. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor? We're now in executive session.